Call the regular city council meeting, March 19th to order at 6:32. Next on the agenda, oh, well, we have a quorum. We won't have Jeff tonight, he's stuck at work. Next on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Okay, next item up is reports from council. Ed Waters?
Waterfront committee sent out five letters. We're waiting on a reply from the leaseholders. There are minor things going on, you know, like dirt filling, those things around the bulkhead. Those still need to be addressed if anybody did get that letter. If you hadn't seen the fence between, on this side of skippers, between that and the parking lot, it's a really nice chain link, black rubberized fence that we put in there. So, take a look at it. It's really a nice addition over there.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Rick Fisher?
Just had a Parks and Pool meeting this afternoon, earlier today. We'll let Mary give you the full skinny on it, but just one thing I want to bring up on that. Coming up in April, Texas Parks and Wildlife is doing a workshop on a grant program that they've got going for small municipalities, for basically public parks and other public entities that like that. It's a 50-50 grant, so basically any improvements or anything you want to do to a park or recreation area within your city, they would cover 50% of it. So, anyway, there's gonna be a workshop on April 17th that we're going to get to, come up with a few ideas to present to them. And their whole mantra on it was, you know, if you have something you want to do, bring it in. We can help you get it to where you fill out the application properly so that you can get it. And if you don't have a specific idea, they can just kind of guide you on things that are available for that. So, we'll give you more updates on that after we do that on 17th.
All right, Rick, thank you. Alex Scanlon?
No report.
Thank you, Alex. Amanda?
So, for a quick update, sorry, from the Sealya Thunder Mayor, on city administrator, we had about 15, 12 or 15 applicants, about 15 total. The mayor and I sat down yesterday and thoroughly reviewed those applicants. We've narrowed it down, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to bring some finalists forward to council for interviews. And then, well, we'll complete that probably by the end of this month, early part of April, and then hopefully by shortly thereafter, we'll have a finalist and can work on getting those details worked out. But we had a good candidate pool, so excited about that prospect. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. Actually, I have a few things. Just so everybody knows, whoever got one of the sheets I produced last week with the one-way streets in Kima, they went ahead and passed that version of it. So, Sixth Street is gonna be one-way in, you're gonna follow that. If you don't have that, I'd be glad to produce some more of those and bring them to the next meeting, or you can come by the office and get them. I have a copy of that. Seventh Street will be one-way out. They're going to block off Sixth Street right there at Boo Hut. As of right now, they're not letting any traffic through there, not even golf carts. There was some suggestions made of opening up Sixth Street on the back of Kip and then letting golf carts in on the backside of Kip to park in and out of there. I don't know if that's gonna happen because one of their main objectives of closing off Kip was to have tables and chairs in the street, to have some kind of street dining and hanging out there. So, be careful when you go over there. As soon as you see the red light active on 146 on Sixth and Seventh Street, that's gonna be one-way in and one-way out. If you have any questions, you're welcome to get ahold of me. I can, like I said, produce some more of those drawings, and we can go over that extensively so you guys know how to get in and out of there. Working on finalizing some things with the park renovations for Grove, Deep Hole, and adding some workout stations to Deep Hole, Sundial, and Jarboe Park. Talked to Mary about the budget that Brad had going, where that money was coming from, and touching some of these parks and revitalizing these parks, mainly Deep Hole. We went and looked at Grove Park. I think we can save some money there by keeping that playset intact and just adding the swings and fixing the basketball goals and some of the surround around the other parts of that park. So, we're getting pretty close to hopefully kicking that off and bringing that to council for approval. No word yet back on the boat ramp. I guess they're still conducting their sea turtle study. So, when I reach out to them, they don't have any word for us just yet, so that's still in limbo. The Oakies Walkway, as you just heard, Plaza Ten approved to fund the rear walkway between Oakies to connect that parking lot to Oakies in the back. And then Plaza Ten also approved last week to do some drainage and prevent some flooding in the front end of Oakies and get that part of the parking lot connected. So, that would be a little easier to use that parking lot to get into Oakies. EDC, at the last EDC meeting, approved some new entry lighting for the city. We currently have six of those lights that are out, and they're around $2,000 to replace each one, and then we still have many that are original. And so, it's a lot cheaper to go with replacing all of them with LED lights. They're gonna look real similar. That's on the agenda tonight for council to review if they approve that. Those domes that are over those lights now are gonna be real similar to what we have. They just won't be incandescent, they'll be LED. One thing I wanted to touch on is the cab report. So, some of you may have noticed today, we put on the marquee, we're gonna have a meeting with FEMA here on the 26th, at 6:00 PM. They were willing to come down after our last meeting and talk to the citizens. I think there's a lot of confusion on what's allowed, what's not allowed, so I did ask them to come back. They are coming. I hope we pack this house full of people because I want everybody to be educated on what's right and what's wrong. When I read our ordinance, it's pretty clear to me what's right and what's wrong. How things have been interpreted in the past, you know, I can't really control that. All I can do is say, this is where we need to do moving forward, and we need to follow those rules so we don't get ourselves in this situation again. I think we can probably have that cab closed pretty soon. I don't have a timeline. The number of houses keeps growing. It was 110 last time we talked, it's up to 150. So, we're working diligently with them to narrow down a list. I still do not have a list, but if I had a list and everyone lined up that wanted to be compliant, I wouldn't know what to tell you to do to be compliant right now, short of ripping everything out from under your house. So, we're trying to work on, with FEMA, what we're gonna do to become compliant when those questions need to be answered. So, I don't have a lot of answers, but I think we're gonna get a lot of answers, so please come to that meeting. Please, please, please. I'd like to pack this place and have people overflowing outside. Rick offered to bring his extra speaker system, and we'll set it up outside so everybody can hear and nobody will miss it. I assume we're gonna have a little question and answer session afterwards, but I think if people bring notepads and take notes, I have met with Brian already, he's very clear when he speaks. He doesn't miss too many words, and he knows exactly what we need to be doing, and I think most of your questions will be answered in the meeting itself. Probably won't have a whole lot of questions after. So, I'm looking forward to that meeting because that's gonna put closure on a lot of things, and we'll be able to move forward in this city and know what we're supposed to be doing and what we should have been doing all along. So, please come and please pass the word. With that said, went to the ESV meeting last night with Amanda. I don't know if all of you guys know, but our fire truck was in an accident out here on 2094. It was just...
The ladder truck.
Yeah, the ladder truck. The really nice one that we really need for here. Could be because it's small and it can move around our streets. But I don't know how someone would miss it, but there was a guy crossing over into the Home Depot parking lot, and he was judging a very small car and said he never saw the fire truck. So, he gunned it, trying to get through the intersection, and ran right into the side of the fire truck. Originally, that fire truck was gonna be out of commission for almost six months. They found another fire truck somewhere locally that got totaled, I believe is what Robert said, but the front bumper and everything is all intact. So, we're gonna steal those parts from that truck, and we're only gonna be down six weeks. So, that's good news because we need that fire truck, especially for Clear Lake Shores. And they're down to one apparatus right now, so they're having to rely on their mutual aid for help when something does happen. So, keep your fingers crossed that that goes pretty quick and nothing happens in between now and then. And that's about all I have for my report. Moving on, roads and drainage? Oh, I'm sorry, staff reports. Chief Donaldson, sorry about that, David.
Mayor, council, no report. Thank you.
That's always good, I guess, huh? Roads and drainage. Alex, you wanna speak to roads and drainage?
You can, but you have Lynn Ropkin, and I have anyway.
Sure. When is our next meeting, Thomas?
Next week, Thursday.
So, next week, Thursday, 4 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, so, 4 o'clock. Not a lot has transpired since the last time we did a roads and drainage update, so I'll spare you the details unless there's something I need to include.
I mean, the ongoing is...
I can relay that, yes. So, the plan is still like it was last time. From the bridge up here at Clear Lake Road, all the way through Forest, we're gonna replace the asphalt sections with concrete. That's the next project. You've probably all noticed, the first two segments here are starting to fail really badly, especially on the northbound lane, so that's probably the next project you'll see occur.
I only have one thing to add to that. You know, PMG, we approved that. They did send an email out, I think I gave an update at the last meeting, that they would be on the island on the 13th and 14th. They did come, so they got all their information, and you guys should be getting something back from them with that information that we needed. And thank you, Alex, for always putting that information together for this city. We're lucky to have you.
Oh, okay, good. I don't like microphones. Okay, we're good? All right, yay, okay. I don't have much to report today. We did have a meeting, but luckily Rick and Randy shared several important things, so thank you for that. The main thing actually is just a thank you on behalf of our Parks and Pool Committee. It's mainly out to Odie and Jorge. I don't think we can thank them enough, and we say this, I think, every month and every meeting, but if you are out and about, please stop by Deep Hole. They have put a lot of extra time and effort. Y'all listened to our requests, so we appreciate that, trying to get the parks spruced up and repairs made prior to the sunrise service that's gonna be on the 31st. So, I think everyone will be happy to see that there's the rotten woods taken care of, they're pressure washing, cleaning, painting, and then our committee worked through the rain this weekend and in little pockets to get some new plants out there, things that are native, drought tolerant, and then, of course, a few annuals for color. So, we're gonna try to continue to work and get that wrapped up before the sunrise service. Jorge and Odie are still working on the small pavilion itself. So, maybe, and hopefully that will be wrapped up in time. The other thing we're just working on is pool, 'cause that's right around the corner, May 2nd, time to renew for your pool membership, and the ice cream social will be out there, too. So, you will see, if you are someone that likes to go sit at the pool on the offseason and read a book or anything, beware in April, usually second or third week, Jorge and Odie, again, will be out there trying to clean it up for everyone, pressure washing, the decking, the furniture, the pergola, is like just getting it all nice and fresh. And then, our committee, too, will be out there next, working on landscaping. There's a lot of ant beds, I noticed the other day. If you like to take your dog to Jarboe, just beware, the rain has just, they're crazy, and inside the pool area, so that's another thing they will be putting attention to, and trying to get that cleaned up. And I think that was basically it. Oh, lifeguards are needed. Obviously, this is the time of year where the pool management company comes out and tries to recruit. You'll see the little signs out, so if you know anybody, local kids that like to lifeguard, please share that with anyone there. We are also now going to make a special meeting on Monday at 10:00 AM to continue our conversation with the pool packet, membership, just trying to stay in compliant with what the lifeguards are told to be doing from their management company and making sure on our end that reflects that. So, we're, as a community, supporting them and all the work they put in to keep our, not only children, but adults, safe during the summer months when it's really busy, but also to keep our citizens happy that like to visit our pool. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is waterfront compliance?
Nothing further for waterfront.
Okay, next up is planning and zoning?
No report from Mayor for planning and zoning or CDOA.
Thank you, Patrick. Civic Club report. I think she just texted me something. Oh, she won't be here. That's what she just texted me. Okay.
Is the cleanup, island cleanup this Saturday? That was a Civic Club.
So, yes, that's the 23rd, correct? Yes, so they are gonna have island cleanup where they meet down at Jarboe and clean up, you know, the waterfront area. There will be a dumpster down there. I ordered that, so there will be a dumpster there, and...
About for the recycle paints and things?
That's a different day.
Okay.
That's not for that day. This is just the island cleanup, Ed, where they're cleaning up the waterfront down there. So, it really consists of just a long Jarboe. We don't really have access to much of the other waterfront, maybe down by the boat ramp. I know last year, we didn't have one. Brad, for some reason, elected not to get a dumpster for that, so they dumped it back here. So, we're gonna get the same-sized dumpster they have here, dump over there for them to dump that in. And so, come out and support that on Saturday. The more people that are there, the less time we have to work. Just saying.
And then, the Easter celebration is the following Saturday. They do need volunteers to help with stuffing eggs and setup and at the event, so if you go to their Facebook page, they have a link to sign up to volunteer.
All right, thank y'all. Economic Development Corporation.
Hello, Mayor, council. First, I want to make a note, it wasn't me that ran into the fire truck. I just wanted to publicly state that. At the last EDC meeting, which was actually on Tuesday, we got an updated proposal from Cobb Finley for the main east parking lot. We didn't take any action on it. There was some questions about some overlapping costs on there. I don't know, Alex, have you wanted to update anymore on that, really, or...
I can't. I think Randy's gonna reach out to Cobb Finley, last we talked, and see if we can get the quote maybe more in line with our expectations of the project.
I think that was kind of the path forward, was to reach out to them and see if they want to sharpen their pencil and kind of show them that some of that work was already done before, and also reach out to the new engineering firm, which Councilman Scanlon's done, and...
Alex has already sent that out to them. I was part of that email, so he's got it for sure. We're just waiting on him to get back with a quote.
Sure. Also, as Mayor mentioned, we approved the replacement of the entryway lights, which is item B, and it may garner a little bit of discussion. I was just, I've been out of town, but I was just now looking at those fixtures. They are very, very similar, but they don't have the whole bulb and everything, which personally doesn't matter much to me, but the EDC didn't have the proposal at the meeting, so I don't know if there's any discussion that needs to be had with that or not, but we can wait till item, item B.
Last part?
Yeah, on item B for the light fixtures, it may garner a little bit more discussion because the EDC board has not seen the proposal with the light fixtures.
So, what he did, I had him order a sample so we could physically see how big it was, the color, all of that, because we're gonna order 27 of them.
Sure.
I want to see what we're gonna get before we actually move forward with that. So, depending on what council does tonight, if we approve that, I'm gonna go ahead and, he said he can order one and just send it back, so they don't charge him for that, so he already did, and we'll get a look at it and see what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, really, it looks very similar to me. The only difference is the whole bulb, or globe, I guess, or lack thereof.
So, they are flat? The LED is inside of them, yeah?
Right, yeah. But, you know, just the EDC board approved it, thinking that they were, you know, very, very similar, almost identical, but, so, it just may be something to bring back up to the board. The only concern that I had was the, you know, we want to get the color temperature right. I know there's a few different options for the LED.
So...
I guess the one that matches is the closest to the...
Do you have the colors right there? Is that what's on there?
Uh, that's not in color.
Oh, okay.
I meant the color of the bulb, the temperature.
Yeah, that was a question that I had. They had three different wattages, and each wattage was a different color.
We haven't picked that.
On the case scale.
Right, I just wanted, that's something that I wanted to comment on because we didn't have this info at the meeting, so...
If you look at the lights now, some are warm, some are bright because they've been randomly replaced, and that's part of the problem. We're getting different replacement bulbs based on what's available at the time, so some of them are like a yellowy color.
Yeah, it's another good justification to replace all of them, like the plan.
Well, when I get that sample, I should get that soon. I don't mind bringing that to EDC and letting y'all look at it, and if we want to change our mind on the fixture...
Sure. That's just something I wanted to mention because we didn't...
Before we spend any money, we want to make sure everybody's happy with that product. That's why I ordered that.
Perfect. The only other item that we briefly talked about was we updated our 12-month rolling kind of budget and projects, just, you know, for sources and uses and cash flow. And really, the big unknown still, as it has been for a while, is the part of the boat ramp. But that isn't like it's gonna come to fruition money-wise for quite a while, so it didn't even really make it into the 12-month rolling average, but everything was good, cash flow was.
All right, thanks, Johnny. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. Public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to three minutes per individual. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Okay, no one? All right, moving on to item number nine, consent agenda. Are we, any motions on that?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. I have three minor grammatical things on meeting minutes. Doesn't change context or anything.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Ed. Is there any discussion on any, either one of those items? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item 10, new business, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. A resolution, 2024-07. It's a resolution of the City of Clear Lake Shore suspending the April 10th effective date of CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving continued cooperation with the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, hiring Lloyd Goslink, Goslink attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of city's rate cash case expenses. Finding that the city, the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities. So, this is a rate increase that's been proposed, and we have an opportunity to adopt this resolution and stop that for now until further study is done. And this attorney, I guess, Nick, is representing multiple cities. There's a lot of the cities that have already done the same resolution, so I encourage we do it, stop it, study it, and let these guys do their work and try to prevent a rate increase.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2024-07.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Amanda. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I was just reading through it, so I guess we have the option as to whether or not we want to approve that rate hike in general. I'm just curious, if we don't approve it, what happens?
Well, it's not a matter of approve or not, it's deny it, right? If we don't take action before their deadline, then it's deemed approved.
Right, well, I guess, when I said I was reading through it, it looked like that, I guess, all of the cities had a choice as to whether or not to, you know, accept the rate hike or approve it, or, there wasn't a whole lot in there, though, saying that if you didn't do it, you know, was it, you know, forced on you, or were they stuck with the old rates?
It goes into...
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion, any more questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Item B, confirm EDC approval of, for replacement of entryway lighting on Clear Lake Road through contract with GBS for the amount of $35,569 and 30 cents. So, this is what we brought to EDC at the last EDC meeting and what Johnny was just referring to. You guys have in your package, you should have, and forgive me, Johnny, I sent them the color scheme, and I guess I didn't send it to you, so I'll get that to you. This is here because of what I just described earlier in my report. These lights are getting harder and harder to find, and they're more and more expensive. If we replace them one at a time, they're $2,000. I say we accept this proposal. It seems like a pretty good proposal. They go down to $1,523 per fixture if you replace them all. They'll all look alike rather than random different colors like we have now as far as the lighting, and they are going to LED, so they're going to lower our electric uses also. And from what I thought I saw, the light beam actually, it puts out a better light beam down. It's not gonna shine, because the bulb is inside of it, so it's not gonna shine outwardly as much as it's gonna shine down on the street and light that area up. So, I believe, looking at it, it actually makes a better light pattern.
So, I'll move that we approve the replacement of the entryway lighting pending approval of the design and the color, color temp by EDC. And just so y'all know, it goes down to, if we do all 27 at a time, it goes down to under $1,400 per light, so even better than that $1,500 per...
And I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Ed. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I was just curious, I'm sorry, Alex. I guess we were gonna, yeah, I haven't decided on the wattage yet, which will dictate the color. Is there a price difference? Because I know, I noticed on everyone from 80 to 150 watts, you know, per light in whichever wattage you choose, that's the color of light. Are they all the same price, or is there a price difference on that?
You know, he didn't indicate that there was a price difference, and they had, they had some things circled on here, you know, as far as dependent lighting.
I think what he had circled here was just the design here for the fixtures that we're gonna, that they chose that were, you know, very similar to what we've got right now.
Yeah, well, I can definitely find out if there's gonna be a difference.
And the only other thing I had, too, there was a little line on here that said, do the cost of rise material, rise in cost material, equipment and all that. This proposal's only good for one day, and this proposal was made back in February. I'm assuming it's still good?
So, that was the original... And, and they had, they had something circled on here, you know, as far as dependent lighting.
Uh, I think the thing that circled here was just the, uh, design here for the, uh, uh, fixtures that we're gonna, uh, that they, uh, chose that were, you know, very similar to what we've got right now.
Yeah, well, I can definitely find out if there's gonna be a difference.
And the only other thing I had too, there was a little line on here that said, "Do the cost of rising material, uh, rising cost of material, equipment and all that." Uh, this proposal's only good for one day, and this proposal was made back in February. I'm assuming it's still good?
So, so that was the original proposal. It did go up some because they priced this out. Brad priced this out quite a while back, and this is the newest pricing, but he's holding this pricing because I, I said we were bringing it forward. So, it's not gonna change from this pricing unless there's a change on the wattage. So, one thing I will tell you, if you look at the voltage, the voltage is a hundred to two hundred and seventy-seven volts. I believe that's what changes the wattage, depending on what voltage we supply to that fixture. So, I think what, whatever voltage we have out there is probably gonna dictate what that wattage is gonna be. I don't see us repooling a whole bunch of wire and doing a bunch of electrical, and I believe they would've said something, but I'll, I'll confirm with them what color that's gonna be based on the electrical that we have. 'Cause they've done some work on the parking lot, so they know already what electrical we've got. But I'll make sure I confirm that, and then, like I said, we can bring, Johnny, we can bring that fixture to you and let you guys see it in case you change your mind. I mean, you're funding this, so you could, of course, change your mind, and we could go a different route. Rick?
We may wanna try to stand up a little extra much to space for the last thirty-five years for what we've had. We've been working once and we wish we had spare parts.
So, we've talked about that. I believe Thomas and Johnny both brought that up. Um, and so we, another idea was, we need to light up the walkway behind Oakies, right, with lighting. There's already electrical there, and Plaza Ten's gonna pay for some of those extra lights for that walkway. We already have money in the budget for that, and we're gonna, we're gonna find out first what fixture we want, and then if we have to adjust that pricing for however many EDC decides they want extra, we can do that.
I was actually gonna suggest, is this something that we should take on as, or suggest to Plaza Ten, who isn't the same panel of us sitting here, as a project? We have a lot of money in Plaza Ten. We struggle to find places to spend it because it's restricted. EDC's got a lot of projects outlined. I mean, it, I think that'd be worth investigating. We've got a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifteen thousand in Plaza Ten.
So, I talked to Dick about that, and I'll let you speak. Because with, that is a good question, and one of the questions I had was, do we just let this money sit here and build up in the Plaza Ten account? What can it be used for as far as any city items? So, I'll let you...
There are city items that you can, that you can use that for. Um, we looked into that specific issue, um, last week. The, the mayor was talking about that, and it's, you can pretty much spend the funds on, on, uh, any general service. So, um, it is, um, it, while it's, while it's a transportation company, it does have some general purposes that are in there that would allow you a little bit more latitude on how to spend the funds. I, I do think that is one of those things that you could do, where you use it for lighting throughout the city.
I think that would be a, a smart move if, if everyone else is on board or you're willing to change your motion or, or not. But otherwise, we're gonna, it's just gonna sit there.
I, I can amend my motion, yes, to bring it to Plaza Ten, but we still have to approve it for council. So, I'm looking at you, Dick. Should we approve it tonight, or does it need to go to Plaza Ten first?
Item read on tonight's agenda.
It says, "Confirm EDC approval for replacement of entryway lighting."
Yeah, talks about the EDC approval.
Well, since we're confirming what they've already approved, then we need to go with what they've approved to, to date. And then if there's more, then we can bring it back.
If Plaza Ten wants to do it, then we just bring that on the, the next Plaza Ten. We have a special meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So, my motion should just...
We can change where it comes from if we want.
Right.
And it's kinda strange, nobody's ever asked that question before. What can we do with that money?
Well, it's been stockholder, but...
Not that I'm trying to spend all the money. I was just curious what we could do with it. Okay, so do you wanna amend your motion?
No, we have to approve. We have to approve because EDC's already approved it. So, we have to approve it, and then just, Christie knows to call a special meeting for Plaza Ten before our next council meeting and put that on there.
Okay.
And then it'll be on the council meeting.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, where did that go? I'm just covering that up. Not too much paper. I'll get back to my agenda here in a minute. Okay, um, item C, confirm Plaza Ten approval of walkway between Oakies and, uh, Frank Tamborilla's property at one oh five Aspen through the contract with NL Concrete LLC in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. So, that was the thing we just brought to Plaza Ten.
All right, I'll make a motion that we confirm the, uh, uh, approval for the walkway between Oakies and Frank Tamborilla's property, uh, on, uh, Aspen there for six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
All second.
Okay, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Alex. Is there any discussion on that project? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, item D, twenty twenty-four Consumer Price Index Adjustment to Municipal Telecommunications Right-Away Access Line Rates Increase from Public Utility Commission of Texas. Okay, you wanna help me out on that one? I didn't see that one on there. What are we doing with that? So, are we just approving that?
There's an increase.
Yeah, I think it's just to...
So, we can refuse that one too? I don't have that, I don't have that sheet.
It's basically the same.
It's basically the same.
As what we're doing with Centerpoint, but this is for...
But this one does allow us to deny the rates.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
There are a couple city administrators behind that one. That one went to Brent Speer. Okay, do we have a motion on that item?
So, I will move to decline the CPI adjustment.
All second.
Okay, got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Alex. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes to decline that. Okay, E, item E, fencing around lift stations in the city right-of-way. So, thi- this is on here for the lift stations. I know we, we talked last time, do we need to bring anything back to council, but yes, we do. Because the proposal to put something there is, is, it's gonna be taller than what our ordinances allow us to do that close to the road. So, I'm... Or not, yes.
For lots. No, I said for lots.
Are for lots, yes, and those are not lots. Those are just in the right-of-way from what we determined. So, it's gonna go back to, we do have an exception in our ordinance that says we, as council, can approve something in the right-of-way. So, we need to do something so the Water Board can move forward. They're finished with these, and they need to finish their state statute of putting, securing them, uh, so not anybody can just walk in and get in and, and mess with all the electrical and whatnot. So, I met with, um, Al and, uh, Bob, the president of the Water Board, and they were wanting to find out, you know, what, what kind of fence, what do you think? You know, we've talked. They're very open to whatever we wanna do. They're totally open to whatever we wanna do. The, the rules are, if they put a six-foot fence around it, it has to be a six-foot fence, whether it's solid wood, solid PVC is what was proposed at council before, or chain link. But it has to have barbed wire on it if it's six-foot. It, you can do an eight-foot fence and not use barbed wire and, out of the same material. One of the things that I brought up to them was, you know, there's a lot of discussion when, uh, Mr. Anderson was here about a chain link fence is gonna make it look like a, a prison guard station. We, to Ed's point, you know, Ed brought up the fence over at Skipper's. You can put a, a chain link, polycoded fence there, you know, a plastic-coated fence. It would last a lot longer. It would look better. All of these lift stations, except for the one out on twenty ninety-four, and maybe the one right here next to the Public Works, is kinda on a corner of a street, and I know Rick had some concerns about a solid, anything around it. We had concerns about trees being in the right-of-way and blocking view. There wa- there was talk about blocking the view of traffic, but I, I don't know that it's just traffic other than traffic could be a kid riding a bicycle. Traffic could be someone walking that you couldn't see with a solid fence. So, we need to approve something so these guys can move forward and complete their job. I propose bringing forward this plastic-coated fence or rubber-coated fence because we didn't talk about that before. You could still see through it. You could do it a color, black, green, whatever. Green would probably blend, blend in with the landscape, and you could still see through it, see kids, see traffic, whatnot. So, I don't know if that addresses your concerns. But they're open to whatever we want to approve, uh, but I think we should approve something.
I recommend that we approve an eight-foot, uh, chain link fence with a green coating, rubberized coating on it.
Okay.
All second.
All right. So, there is a little more discussion on this, now that we're gonna go chain link. There is one place right here by the Public Works that, that we already have a barbed wire around that fence. So, these guys proposed that matching that fence with that blue netting or whatever it is, chain link there with the barbed wire that would just extend around that fence so it looks identical to what's there. For that one, for that one location only. So, we would have to approve that barbed wire because we're not supposed to have barbed wire, but we have barbed wire around the Public Works building. And I'm, I don't know when it got put there, but it's there.
If you have barbed wire, it only has to be six feet.
And if you have barbed wire, that one only has to be six feet, and it would match what's there.
Is that lift station between the sidewalk and the street over there?
It's inside of the sidewalk, just about even with the fence line coming down birch.
Is the fence six feet?
I think that fence is right at six feet, maybe six foot six. It's not eight feet.
With the barbed wire on top, yeah.
It's really whatever we think would look better. I think a green eight-foot fence would probably look fine as well. That blue stuff is loud.
And they were just wanting to match what we had. We can, we can say eight-foot there too, and that would be fine. I just wanted you to know what their thoughts were. They, they said it might look better if you wanted to match it, and they could match it. I figured I'd bring that to you guys and let you guys decide whether you wanna match it or whether you want all the fences to look the same.
So, I guess it would be possible if we wanted, if you just wanted, wanted to go eight-foot chain link, could we do that one in blue to match that fence instead of green and do everything else in green so it'll be a little bit more attractive around the island?
Well, you, you could do that, but like, we have that blue netting around the Public Works that you can't really see through. That one's not really an issue for traffic or anything because you're already into the street when you're looking down. So, you could use the same material and, and make it that color, or you can get it plastic-coated blue if that's an option. Al, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
That's a pretty good summary, Rick. Uh, WCID met last night, and we went ahead and approved the chain link fence, eight feet high, except for the motor pool area where we proposed to match whatever's there and make it look like it's part of the same complex. But, um, yeah, it does need to be eight feet. Could be six feet, but we don't want the barbed wire, uh, around these lift stations. So, and, and I handed you the administrative code.
Right.
That has the requirements for it, uh, so you have that before you. But WCID pretty much approves whatever the city council approves.
Okay. I'm not Rick, by the way.
Oh, God.
That's Rick. I'm teasing you out.
I, I think either one's fine. I'm looking at the Google Maps Street View. Eight-foot blue, eight-foot green. It doesn't, doesn't matter to me. Yeah, just no barbed wire.
Yeah, I'm just not a huge fan of barbed wires. I'd be, I'd be more inclined to go with just the eight-foot, and then if we just keep it green, you put that blue, uh, mesh around it, just have it match the, uh, Public Works.
So, the motion's good. Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Al, I think you have your answer. All right. All right, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven seventeen.